Your worship, may I ask that you turn your mics on for streaming?
Okay, we're gonna stream and nobody is attending by video conferencing that I know of. And first order up is adoption of the agenda. Is there anything urgent to add?
I have nothing, sir.
Okay, there's nothing. Somebody want to move? James? Agenda has presented. All in favor? Opposed, let's carry it. Next item up is the accounts payable to Larry. Does anybody have any questions? James?
E F T forty-six eighty-nine, fire investigation report. What was that for?
Nine twenty-six, Second Street, probably. On April twenty-ninth. He was there Friday and Saturday.
We do that third party?
We contract, we phone the city, bring out an investigator. Sometimes it's just easier.
And then forty-seven oh-four, the Woolsey Mechanical Group one. Is the town doing a lot of the work on that project themselves, or are we just procuring materials for that one?
Which project is that?
Two fifty-two.
We are doing most of the work ourselves.
Any other questions? I already asked about the twenty-seven hundred dollar rain gauge.
I was wondering about that one, too.
It is an electronic rain gauge that included the calibration. It auto reports data that we will use for the stormwater studies.
Any other questions? The only one, other one I have is M P E and the SCADA. We seem to be writing them checks every month. So is this an ongoing thing, or?
No, that pro-
How is it working? Like, I know-
That project is anticipated to be finished by the end of July.
So-
It's a progress-
So they're just progressing us monthly and we're paying them monthly?
Yes, sir.
Did they quote it at the top, or it's cost plusy, or?
It was quoted and they are still under budget.
Anything else? All in favor, receiving information, opposed, but it's carried. And moving on to delegations, we have Sergeant from your C M P to report, to read his report, or not, I don't know. Welcome.
Hello. Well, some of you I've met before and some of you I've not. So I'll introduce myself. I'm Mike Cordy. I'm currently the acting detachment commander for Red Cliff. I, my substantive position is with the Red Cliff Traffic Unit, which I was there since twenty-eighteen to now. And last year, in June, I started acting for the detachment commander. Position from June till August. Then September, I went up to Nunavut for thirty days and then I acted again when I came back in October. And then Sergeant Rivard, he took over from November until January, and then he went off. So now I am back into the position since January twenty-eighth and hopefully until the position is filled permanently, which I can speak to a little bit later as well. Other than that, I have over twenty years policing experience spread between the R C M P and the O P P. So I've done quite a bit of things over the last twenty years, including general duty, traffic, emergency response team, dignitary protection, a bunch of stuff like that, so. So with regards to the quarterly reports, this is the fourth quarter report. It took them a little while for us to receive this, so it's from January of twenty-twenty-two through to March of twenty-twenty-two. So with our priorities that we had set in the previous performance plan, interactions with youth, that was an area that continued to be impacted from January to March, where we weren't allowed to really enter the schools and there was a lot of things going on with regards to COVID. However, since that, all those conditions are kind of lifted. We have, since March, started visiting the schools again. We have school groups at the detachment coming in, so we're starting to interact with the youth again as well. With regards to visibility patrols, we continue to do patrols throughout Red Cliff and elsewhere in the county as well. One other part that I'll be speaking to a little bit later with our, we have a significant issue with resourcing since, over the last year. So some of those patrols have been, we couldn't get obviously as many patrols as we would like to get in, in every area. And now that the warmer weather's starting up, that's where it's an area that we're gonna focus on because now people are getting out and doing things again. We can see the increase in traffic, increasing things that are going on in the areas. So we're gonna try to get as many patrols, proactive patrols throughout the town as well. With regards to traffic operations, we continue to focus on aggressive driving occupants, restraints, distracted driving and impaired driving. During this fourth quarter, we had a total number of forty-eight occurrences that were provincial traffic and criminal, and one criminal code traffic related. One of the criminal code traffic, it was an impaired operation charge which went criminal. However, most of the impaired operation occurrences are now going by provincial sanctions rather than criminal side. So we can do basically an impaired type investigation where it's the same penalties, but within kind of a couple hours and it's done. There's no court or anything like that. There is an adjudication process that people can go through to appeal it, but it does, it stays out of the courts. And during that time, we're down significantly forty percent of provincial traffic complaints and investigations. And that's just a sign of the times with regards to just the diminished traffic that was out there between January and March. And now we're, we're obviously seeing a big increase in that as well, now that things are opening up again and the weather's getting warmer. With reduce, regards to crime reduction, meetings with crime partners such as the community advi-, or Citizens Advisory Committee, Rural Crime Watch, and those type of groups, throughout COVID, those meetings were not happening. And some of even the Citizens Advisory Committee have stepped away, or the committee kind of dissolved. So that's one of my priorities is to get that back into existence, to recruit more people and so we can get those things going. Rural Crime Watch has not had a meeting since their A G M, I believe, last September. So that's one of the things that we're trying to get going as well. With regards to compliance checks, we have compiled lists of those within the community that are on various types of release. And we have been focusing on them. With regards to, if you look at some of the stats later on, where it shows other criminal code. There was a significant increase, almost three hundred percent, and that's a direct result of the charges of, for fail to comply for people who were bound by conditions who weren't complying with them. So we're still keeping tabs on, on people bound by conditions and that hopefully reduces some of the crimes that are out there. We have been working closely with Medicine Hat Alert Property Crimes as well, and with the Southern Alberta District Crime Reduction Unit to do various projects in Red Cliff and throughout the county. Different various things like we've got bait vehicles or bait items that we can place in certain areas and they're obviously loaded up with GPS, so if they get stolen, then we can kind of locate them and then find out what's going on there.
Give him a little flack over here about leaving keys in a vehicle right now.
Were you clear of wrongdoing in that one?
Yeah, I think so.
So with regards to human resources on the, I think that might be the next one. On the municipal side of the detachment, there are eight established positions. Six are currently working. The reason that it doesn't quite add up to eight, three are on special leave and one hard vacancy. Red Cliff Detachment actually has a one member that's surplus to establishment that isn't counted in the, the mix. So that way there, for some reason, it just happened that way with a transfer out that didn't happen and the member ended up staying here and then another member came in and replaced him. So we've had, kind of been plus one for about the last year and a half.
So that just means we're at minus two. Half full or half empty?
Yeah. So one was on parental leave. That person has now come back from parental leave. This was the report between January and March, so in April, one member did come back from parental leave. And of the two members that are on medical leave, one is the detachment commander and the other one was a constable. One of the corporal positions is a hard vacancy. That was Sergeant Albert Rivard, who was promoted to Bow Island Detachment. And those, both those positions were advertised back in March and they are scheduled, they can be filled any day. So we're just waiting on hearing who was a successful candidate for those promotional process and we could be back up getting two more supervisors for the detachment. Currently, as it stands, I'm the only non-commissioned officer above the rank of constable between here and Bow Island, so there's no other members with rank within both detachments, so.
So, did Dave stay in Bow Island? Rivard?
Rivard, he is, but he's off right now. We're not sure when he's coming back, so-
Okay.
Out of all the people working, there's, I'm the only one supervisor that's working right now.
Must be a busy man.
Sometimes. So like I said, the promotional oper-, was promoted, posted for the Red Cliff Detachment. It was posted June first for the detachment commander. And it closes June twenty-ninth and that process usually takes about three, four, five months before it's filled, so sometime between now and the fall, we should know who's gonna be the permanent detachment commander for the next several years, so. Maybe. I'm hoping Santa Claus doesn't bring anybody in and I get the stay, but we'll see. And for a while, we had, we were minus, we were supposed to have two public servant positions and one was vacant. And now all public servant positions at the detachment are full, both on the municipal side and the provincial side. And we did have one member that was also off with regards to the federal government vaccine policy. And he requested an accommodation and it was approved, so he is also back to work now, too. So our numbers are starting to get back to normal. With regards to the financial outlook, year to date, there the numbers here on that, that sheet with, with regards to pay, the year-to-date expenditures was lower than what was expected. That may have to do with the fact that some of the members are off and they're not being counted. Overtime was slightly elevated and that is due to needing to fill some of the vacancies with overtime so that we could maintain our, our coverage for maintaining calls for service. Operating maintenance, that stayed pretty much the same. Commissioner guarding, that is down. One of the reasons is we don't have so many guards that can, on the civilian side, on the commissioner's side that are working. We had hired a few more, but then they got full-time jobs somewhere else, so now they aren't available to come in and guard for us. So that's another area that we need to look into and try to get some more guards. Equipment purchases are down. Other type of expenses are down as well. So all in all, with the fourth quarter final projections, the year, the expenditures that were planned, for the most part, it's all down. Despite the, here where it says the the impacts of the, the pay raise, that the R C M P members nationally received, division rates increased. We're twenty-eight thousand per working officer to a forecast of thirty-five thousand. I believe that's where the next the next financial statement. With regard to some of the statistics, persons crimes, most of the crimes are down, most of the statistics are down. Property crime, or persons crimes are down by forty-three percent. Property crimes were slightly elevated by fifteen percent, and when I did some research in that, it was mostly due to frauds or identity fraud or internet frauds, things of that nature. Same thing with traffic was down by thirty-nine percent. Other federal acts were down by one hundred percent. Other provincial acts down by fifty-three percent, and motor vehicle collisions during that period were down by sixty-one percent as well. And as I stated before, I believe those are all down because of the COVID restrictions. And now that everybody's starting to travel around again, we're starting to see an increase in all areas. Some of the other statistics that's on here, criminal harassment, it, some of the noted ones up by three hundred percent. Most of those were harassing communications and they were, most of them were deemed unfounded or insufficient evidence to lay charges. With regards to uttering threats, it stayed the same, but one was cleared otherwise and the other one was cleared by charge. Breaking enters, there were three of them within that time period. One was, was unfounded and the other two were cleared by charge. And the theft from unders, most of those are, the increases from, half of them were from theft from motor vehicles. And the other criminal code, as I say down there, see down the bottom where it's increase of two hundred percent, those are a direct result of laying charges of fail to comply on people with conditions. Some of the other things that were included in this package was the Alberta R C M P app, where people can report crimes, contact to the detachment, and all that's available on both iPhones and Androids. So that has kind of brought some of the reporting into the modern century so that most people can do that if they wish. And with regards to the body worn cameras, I know it's been included in many of the financial statements for years, but they're finally starting to come out. They, they tested them in various locations and now they're just trying to find a vendor for them and they should be coming out. And I believe that the federal government has agreed to pay for the implementation of them for the next three years, so.
And in your report, you say that Alberta is one of the divisions that K Division is getting some, Nunavut is getting some, and is that what I read, or did I read it wrong? It was like, still, it was like they were still rolling them out in almost like a test phase?
I know that they were testing them in various-
So those were the three areas where they tested them?
Tested them, yes.
Okay.
In the different climates so that they can test them in, up north and then in, on the coasts and then kind of in bigger detachments as well. But once they roll out, they're, it's gonna be national. Some of the other items, just with some of the conversations you were saying earlier with regards to vehicles being unlocked, or the, we had an incident earlier last week where we, I guess it was all over everything Red Cliff, where people were entering vehicles the night before. Everybody reported it on everything Red Cliff, that their vehicles had been broken into, some items taken, but we did not receive one call on any of that stuff, so if we don't know about it, not much that we can do. One of the, one of the things that did happen was a concerned citizen did report in the next day a suspicious vehicle, which matched the description that some of the people reported on everything Red Cliff. So with that, we put, I put the email out to the detachment, keep a lookout for this vehicle. And sure enough, the next evening, the vehicle was back in Red Cliff. Our members got dispatched to it and they ended up finding the vehicle, catching the two individuals inside. And they were charged with various property crimes offenses and as well as, obviously, they were under the influence of various drugs. So I came in and did a drug recognition expert exam on them and we ended up getting them both off the road. The driver was brought through the provincial sanctions. His vehicle ceased for thirty days and he lost his license for thirty days, so. In addition, all that, that's kind of the good things where we need to make sure that people report these type of things. Let us know what's going on. And if they see suspicious activity, report it because we're, like, the citizens are the ones that know what's going on in their neighborhoods more than we do, so. That's just one example of, within twenty-four hours, we have these people in custody and their vehicle gone, so.
Yeah, I noticed in here you said like you don't follow Facebook and I don't blame you. So should we be putting out on our Facebook page that possibly people should have that app? Because at least then, if nothing else, that, does that app have the two-two-eight-eight or the two-two-two-two, or?
It does, because you can actually make a phone call to report to the detachment. It has the contact to detachment. You can actually report crimes on there and then we will get sent the information and we can follow up. But obviously, it wouldn't be right away because phone call is easy, quicker. But if you send it through the app, then it gets routed through us.
Live.
Not, they, somebody wouldn't be able to put one, like the online crime reporting right away and it would get to us. We have, it would go to the unit where they would create a pros occurrence, like occurrence, and then download it to us and we get notified. But definitely in any emergency or urgent situations, the best ways to call.
Right, but I've seen it, I've seen it too, where people are, I don't know if they're actually reporting it or just complaining on social media and, yeah, what, that, that's not in the direct route to anywhere.
Yeah, their vehicle was entered last night and this, a little bit of change was stolen, but then they don't call us, then we don't have it on record. We don't know who to look for. We don't know what's going on, so. But other than that, any questions for me?
I had one question. I was just trying to find it. I read it in there about the body worn cameras. And you'd made mention that the federal government was gonna cover the rollout, which is awesome. I was just wondering, they, it made it sound like there would be a yearly operation cost to those. Do you know of that? And maybe I'm just interpreting the way that it was worded, but
The only thing I can see is that, like, for a year is, would be storage. That's the only problem and that's one of the biggest issues why it hasn't come out so early, right away. Because there's so much video storage data from that, that's gonna have to be stored somewhere and kept for, most of our stuff is two years, that you need a major mainframe to keep all that video stored somewhere.
Yes.
And then obviously, as technology advances, then there might be replacement costs in the future, but that's the only- I'm pretty sure once we get the body worn cameras, they're gonna be up to date, ready to go right away and then three to five years, they might start not working as well. I think they're going through the same process right now with their in-car videos as well. They're looking at updating or upgrading some stuff, too.
More as a citizen, not as a counselor, but Red Cliff days this weekend, Beer Gardens, more bases on site, if they're available, the better for us.
Yeah, there's a couple extra members that I brought in extra.
Okay.
And they're working nights and that, one of the, one of the things really helpful was the member that came back after the, being off. It worked out that his shifts work right through the weekend, so there's an extra member right there, too.
Perfect. Okay, yeah. If you wanna send him by, then you can touch base with him and show him how we're gonna be setting everything up. That's what we've done in the past, just good communication beforehand and never had a problem yet, but it's good to be prepared for it in case there is a problem.
Yep.
And just you guys onsite, everybody behaves better anyways. You're a good visual deterrent.
And I'll be in the dunk tank on Saturday, so.
Legion Dunk Tank.
Yeah. Somebody phoned and said, do you wanna be in the dunk tank? I said, sure.
At three o'clock?
Yeah.
Did they ask you to?
Three thirty.
How much are balls, do you?
I don't know.
Ten bucks, I'll ball. If I know ya, otherwise it's three for five.
They're gonna raise a lot of money putting you on that chair.
It's a muller there for having heart. And most of you people really can't throw accurately, so.
Yeah, that's right, we can't. Better wear a helmet.
I can duck. I can always jump.
Just get a kid to run up and just push it.
I think, well, I don't know how they would set up, but there's two dunk tanks, I think, going on on the weekend, which is- I think the teen center has one.
Teen center, that's who asked me, but, and then Farago had said yes, but I didn't get back on.
Well, they didn't ask. So the only question I have, Michael, is I don't remember if we always get the accounting that you gave us. Because we pay by contract and you're actually showing that you're making money off of us this year, which you may, you may get into trouble for showing that.
It's in the report. I don't know what was included in previous reports, so if it's in the report, I figured it was good enough.
Well, no, and it's good to know, but like I say, especially in light of, you know, we pay so much a year, plus then the federal government is coming after us for the back pay to boot, which is two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars and it's, and yet you're telling us that you guys made out like bandits, so I don't know how that's gonna work. Anyway, thanks for that information. It may help us down the road.
Now we have a bargaining chair.
And I, like I said, I don't know if this was included before.
Oh, we'll wait till after June twenty-ninth to mention anything.
But yes, these, they seem to be, like I said, I don't know what was in there in the previous reports.
Well, if it was, it would only be once a year, so that might be why I don't really remember it.
Because this is the fourth quarter one at the end of twen-, the fiscal year and starting- Pretty soon, I'll have the first quarter report for this year.
Like I say, it is, it's good information. I just don't know if we were really supposed to see it. But that's okay. It's all good.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I just bumped into my mind, too. This isn't really the place to say this, but at the pub today, I had a fella come in and he's wearing a very fancy vest. And he wanted to put up a poster for an event they were having and my partner said, no, we can't put that up, sorry. And he left very hostile, hos-, hostile. And so I thought maybe you should know that one of those fellows is in town.
Okay, keep our eyes out. Under the liquor laws, they're not allowed in licensed establishments wearing that, so.
Yeah, well, I never saw him. Actually, I was sitting in there, but then when I was done my meeting, she says, yeah, did you hear that guy? I said, no, I didn't hear it. So apparently he got mad and she knew that he was with that affiliation. So I assumed he was wearing something of
Visual touches?
Yeah, I don't know how they, I don't know. I don't know whether they are. She said M C is, what the hell does that mean? And R C, or what's that mean?
I don't know.
I got it a little bit of a lesson this afternoon.
We'll keep an eye out.
So, yeah. So now it kind of worries me with this weekend coming up. Hopefully, there's nothing.
I'll mention it to the people working days and nights on the weekend.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Would somebody like to move information? Chris? All in favor? Opposed, let's carry it.
He left before we could vote.
What's that?
He left before we voted.
Oh, that's good. Good. Moving on to minutes, we have the council meeting of May twenty-fourth for adoption.
I forgot you.
Is there any questions, concerns, mistakes? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, that is carried. And subdivision development appeal board meeting held May sixteenth.
I'll move my question.
James? Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Not real, wow, I don't know.
Were you gonna ask?
It's not a question. It's more a statement, or concern, I guess. Just when I attended that meeting, just as a silent observer, I had no voting or opinion in the meeting because you're only allowed one sitting council member, according to the M G A. It was right after I'd done my training and I just was wondering how often that training's supposed to take place and if maybe we should have a refresher, because it seemed a little not what they taught me three days before I sat in that meeting.
So everybody has to go through training every three years?
Every three years?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I guess the question I would have is, we have nothing in the land use bylaw that says your garage has to be smaller than your house? Like, when you can build a garage bigger than your house, that's good?
That's all lot coverage. I don't know that answer, Shannon.
Well, I, I just, I realize lot coverage, but, well, I- Well, I, I just, I realize lot coverage, but, uh, well, I, I know that the land use bylaw has been rewritten many times. At one time there was a maximum and at one time it actually had proportions of towards the house. Like it was only supposed to be two-thirds the height, which now this is actually higher. But I also thought you couldn't build bigger, but that's maybe just my mind.
Uh, there is regulations within the land use bylaw, however, it is in front of the SDAB in which they can deviate.
Yes. I know that SDB has powers, yes, but, okay, it's all good. Any other questions, concerns? All in favor, opposed, that is carried. And the Red Cliff Cypress Regional Waste Management Authority meeting, Larry, Mr. Chairman. Any questions or concerns about that meeting? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, that is carried. And then moving on to request for decision, we have. Rail Pro Inc. asking for another water service. Who's the taker on that? Or is?
Uh, you know, I have.
I guess somebody has to make a motion.
Option one.
Okay, Jim is moving option one?
What was happening there, Jim?
Pardon?
Thought you were having an attack or something, but.
Well, I couldn't see it.
I have the same problem.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, and, and maybe it's a dumb question, but this is just strictly gonna be hooked up to fire suppression. It's not an additional water service for the building?
That is our understanding.
That's what it says in the thing.
I know that's what it says on the piece of paper, but. Just asking a question.
I think there's a six or eight inch service in Rail Pro right now.
No, there isn't.
What, what, what is that in that sprinter room?
A six inch service, but it's not a service.
But it's a fire suppression system.
That came from Don Glass.
Yeah, that doesn't work.
That got shut off.
Oh, it's, it's shut off?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now I understand.
That's why they kinda want something for their fire suppression, all of a sudden. They don't have one.
Yeah, their insurance company lost their mind.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
But there's mention in here that that might not be enough water for them to satisfy their needs?
Well, I, I think it's the size, they, is there a size mentioned in here? Uh, I don't remember the name on it. I don't see a size.
So, sir, the, I believe the, the, um, before we got into details, it was, is will, council willing to entertain this?
Oh, this is preliminary.
Very preliminary.
Oh, okay.
Recalling my discussions with Elise on it.
I guess, sorry, Larry.
So Don Glass's fire suppression system is all shut off, they're just using the ones that we're putting in at, at, ev- every corner of the lot type of thing, or?
I couldn't say. I don't know what's alive and not alive in that place, right?
Is that certain T would have in there?
Yes.
Not a lot.
They re- they did run a line from third into their property and put a hydrant and then that was extended to.
Three more hydrants, I believe?
That are in. But I don't know if all conditions are met. Like with utility right of ways and all that stuff and is it, is it a done deal?
Still in process, progress, process?
Right, so it's not as smooth as it could have been. Because obviously somebody's dragging their feet a little.
If a spark goes up in that place.
Maybe we shouldn't have let them do it until the right of ways were completed. And so that's why I honestly say, we don't know what they're doing. I don't know what they've, what they still have live in their old system, what they don't. Cause I don't think any town employee has ever gone and checked. I don't know if that's their responsibility. But what I would like to say, based on that conversation, is if we allow this service for Rail Pro. I think it should be engineered and it should be made certain that none of this water goes back into Don Glass either. Because there's obviously lines in place.
Exactly.
That could feed, backfeed into the property. So I think there needs to be some checks and balances put on this to make sure it's just theirs and it's one hundred percent independent. Coming from us to them. James?
Uh, two things. One, our fire services, they're not metered, right?
Those hydrants aren't.
Yeah, okay. Two, um, do we have enough water going down that street to be able to afford a? That kinda mean, like, would we be able to efficiently supply that if they're relying on us to provide them with fire protection?
It is my understanding that we will only be able to run one hydrant at a time.
One hydrant at a time.
Yep.
And certainty'd put a new hydrant in on the south side as well, just, just west of Rail Pro. So I don't know. I, I, if no other event is happening, there's probably enough water to feed their fire suppression system. The good thing is, most of the time, fire suppression systems don't totally go off.
Yeah, no, it's.
In areas. But again, that's, I think the big thing is, right now, we're. Approving or not approving another, and I don't know if they are, like, this says they may already have two? Or am I reading that wrong too? It may potentially be serviced from two locations. Does that mean us and them?
Two different.
Us and certainty'd. Is that what that two means, or?
No, it means that we, we have two different locations that we could think of to put the second service.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we can service it from two different points, possibly.
Yes.
Okay, that's what that is. So they're asking for a second water service and I just think if we do it. We should be making sure that, once again, our backsides are covered.
Yes, I'd be making sure that it's only tied into fire protection.
Because we're tying into their existing system, like with, right now.
Well, I'm, I don't know how exactly if we were coming in on, like, like I say, if it was engineered, I'm assuming somewhere they'd have to cut off the old line and hook up a new line, but I don't know. Like, we're just, as counselors and mayors.
We need to not be operational.
We're just politicians, so. Yeah, we're not supposed to be operational, but we can put restrictions on it. I think. That's not being operational. This means operations have to do our wishes. We do get to a little bit of say every now and then.
I, I do agree that if, especially if. The concern is that we can only run one hydrant or one service at a time. That it'd be disconnected from anything going back the other way, because I would just hate to be held liable for. Us saying, yeah, we'll give you fire protection water and then an event happens and there's not water.
Well, and I look at it, if, if we tee, if they tee in to whatever system they have in place and that water can then go back to certainty. There's no meter on there, there's no saying where that water is flowing and why. Could be leaking into the ground and nobody would even know it, right? I'm not saying somebody would abuse it, I'm just saying we don't know the condition of any of that system, so.
Well, can't fire suppression systems be metered? They can't be.
Well, I don't, I've never seen one that's been metered, especially when that big.
Well, you'd add a lot of restriction into your line.
I can't imagine what a six inch meter would cost with backflow preventer and all that stuff in it. I mean, it would, nothing is, not saying you can't, you can definitely get great big meters.
There's still backflow on fire protection lines, right?
Yes, yeah, there's, yes, there is.
Yeah, there has to be.
Yeah, that there is. But usually in the event of a fire, you're not metered. It's kinda like, get it out, like, we don't measure how much water the fire department uses. When they hook up to a hydrant, right?
No.
It's free flow, so. But like I say, it's just, somewhere along the lines, the town has to make sure that the water is doing its intended use and not something else.
Yeah, cause I, I always thought that they were all weird.
I don't know that I've ever seen a meter on a fire protection line.
I can't say either. Like, I've been in the schools, I've been in Red Hat.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, Jim made the motion.
I can't make any motions.
Would, Jim, would you be opposed to a friendly amendment that it's approved with conditions? To your motion?
Like what conditions?
Phyllis has her hand up.
Yep.
Could you approve in principle with details to come, forthcoming to council?
I suppose. Well, I just think, like I say, as long as, as long as we're protected and, and really, I think some engineering should be done there, not us, right? It should be theirs. It's their ask.
Doing it that way in principle, then it gives us another checkpoint that we could kibosh it or put our own input into it later.
Well, that it, so we approve in principle and it'll come back with details.
Yep, so we would, we, you would, you as council would approve it in principle. We as staff would then go back, work on the location, work on the things I've heard tonight. Come forward with an agreement that, um, would protect the town in the event that we can't flow water, water due to an event, um.
Get those finer details anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah, permitting and engineering provided by them.
So we're willing to play ball tonight as well, if we're asking.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Jim, option one is amended. And that was amended.
Yeah.
Good.
What you said.
Everybody's clear?
Okay, any other questions or concerns? All in favor, opposed, that is carried. Okay, and moving on to the Red Cliff Rectangle Consulting Engineering and Tendering Services for slab and dasher board replacement. Ooh, get out you.
Came in a little underbath.
I'll make for option number one.
Kathy is moving option one. Any questions or concerns? So a question I have is, do they, does this also include the construction oversight?
No, sir. That would be in the tender.
Okay, but. Engineers used to roughly charge ten percent cost of the job. Am I mistaken, or is that the way it used to be? So if they're charging us forty-six thousand dollars, that's only saying a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar job, right? Or, or no, four point six million job, four point six million dollar job.
If, if I may, sir.
Okay.
Um, I believe that this, this project, where, what we're asking for here, they are going to develop the plan and then that plan would go to tender. And then that would be awarded, so th- these folks would not be necessarily overseeing the plan, so just to come up with the, the tender ready construction documents.
And, and that's what was up top.
Right.
So we would be overseeing the construction phases then?
Well, my, my thoughts would be that we would, that once it goes out to tender, that the overseeing of the project would be included in that portion of the tender.
Okay, so this is one way of getting the design done for supposedly less.
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna get some drawings, we're gonna have some, some documentation that we can put out and say to other firms, please build us this.
And then does this give them the only dibs on construction oversight?
No.
Okay, cause that could be a bad position to be in. All right. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor, opposed, that is carried. And Town of Red Cliff Facilities Plan.
Make for option number one.
I have questions.
Okay, go ahead, James, ask the question.
So, this three hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred dollars that you guys are asking for. The, the detailed breakdown, unless I'm wrong, is on the last page here, correct? Page twenty-five, Chris? Yeah, right there. So, I guess I'm just curious where some of these numbers came from? And what the priorities might be. For example, the museum exterior repairs, we all know what that is, but the public works HVAC upgrade. What, what exactly are we looking at for that particular, like, I, I don't remember from the engineering report, but what are they saying that we need there? That would justify us dropping a couple hundred thousand dollars this year on it?
It, it says new HVAC does come up to code. That's what my memory says, that's what the report says. I didn't bring my binder in today, sorry.
Current, current code?
Current code.
Okay. Okay, I'm just wondering if some of these numbers might. Like, be a little light as well, like ventilation upgrade to the rectangle, what? What are we hoping to get for two grand there?
These are the numbers that were provided in the report, sir.
I think these were pulled from the facilities report, so those were engineered estimates of some kind.
Pulled from the, oh, okay. And this is us just saying you guys can spend money to.
We can start working.
Figure out what this is gonna be in cost and so on and so forth.
Well, these are the numbers that were in the facilities report. We've laid them out over a seven-year period. Um, to start getting work done.
And then they were taking this money from our surplus, which was talked about at the last.
Spending some of it, yes.
Government, governance committee, that we should spend some of that, cause.
Yeah.
Some people think that, you know, taxpayers are being taken.
Let's not start that debate again. Okay.
So these may or may not be very accurate. They're just what's in the book.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that report's only a year old, so hopefully it's not terrible.
Yeah, and as we get into the, um, details of each project and the design of each project, we will have better cost estimates for you. But these are the guidelines that, that the facilities report gave us.
Okay, yeah, I, I guess the only reason that I brought it up and is. I remember pre-election, there was some people that were vocal online about the town's budgeting procedures. And, and this is not my word, so don't take this as an offense, please, but. Using the recycle station as an example where the original budget was fifty grand and then the approved cost was whatever, a hundred thirty-eight or whatever the number was. And someone made a comment about the town was wasting money and blah, 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 and. I'm, I'm not opposed to spending money to fix things if they need to be fixed, I just. Hope that we're coming at it with real numbers so that it doesn't look like. Low numbers are being thrown out so it can be approved and then the numbers come in higher and then it just doesn't look very transparent.
When budgeting at any time, sir, we are very, uh, aware of the fiscal responsibility to our resident. And it's a very fine inch sword in coming in too high.
A hundred percent.
And coming in too low, so we do ride that, that balance quite a bit.
Okay, that, that was just my only concern, cause as soon as I saw some of these numbers, I was like, oh, that popped into my head, that conversation that people were having online that. I personally chimed in on back then, but I just would hope that.
I agree, and when, when we look at a two hundred thousand dollar project, we actually have to get firmer numbers.
Yeah.
But this is the guideline that we've been given for each project.
And this is just approving money to start that process?
Yes, sir. And we're only approving that much?
Yeah, oh, no.
Three hundred and seventy-five.
Yeah, no, I get that, I get that, I just.
Or more or less.
Yeah, well, that's what it is. It's three seventy-five.
I, I get that, I just, like I said, I just don't want it to come off that. Cause I know that there were some very vocal people back then and I'd hate that to happen again.
Don't forget by the next election, Jim.
Yes, sir, but we, we spent money on the study to give us a guide and a path forward. Yes, sir, but we, we spent money on the study to give us a guide and a path forward.
Yes.
And this is the path forward.
Yeah, and that's just what I, I just, I couldn't, I didn't know where the numbers came from, I don't, that was a long time ago, I read that report.
They're in the report.
And they were up in the upper pages.
Chris? Under the fire hall. Repairs and maintenance, minor thing.
Minor.
Under high, third one down, the ealing tiles do not match.
Yes. You can see where those are being repaired, like in twenty twenty-six, twenty-three?
No, I don't know what an ealing tile is, we don't wanna put a C on it.
Oh, I am so sorry, sir, I made a typo.
Very minor thing.
Okay.
So if we approve this, there's no problem with timelines, too many things to do, is this gonna end up rolling over?
I imagine some of it, the bigger projects may roll over, the smaller things will get done this year. And we'll get a good start on the, the bigger projects in twenty twenty-two.
So this may be seen later on in twenty twenty-three budget, maybe?
It may be.
Good.
As a carry forward project, it might be seen, the twenty twenty-three will be, is there for you to, to start considering that. That'll be brought forward to you at budget time as well then.
Okay, any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Okay, then moving on to the twenty twenty-two Alberta Municipalities Convention, meeting with Minister of Municipal Affairs. Any topics for consideration or not?
This might be a good time to bring up the Cypressview Foundation email that we got.
Hmm. Okay.
That and the, and the school, on the topic of keeping our tax dollars in our community. So the Cypressview Foundation, they wanna talk about building a new building, and you missed the last meeting, but I don't know if they're just blowing smoke up our butts, but.
Oh, the last Cypressview meeting, yeah, yeah.
Or was it just a policy meeting? It was just a policy meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
I was actually there.
Yeah, no, sorry, it was just a policy meeting, so it might've just been blowing smoke up our butts, but there was talk about how they want encouragement from, from municipalities to offer up some land to build this facility on. So if we come up with a parcel of land, maybe over by the RCMP station or by across from the pool, I don't know what will work. Phyllis knows about it, she got the email from Dwight. And, yeah.
Right, yeah, Serov sent that out, actually, I think last Thursday. And so we did not put it, we did not put it in the agenda. We figured we'd put it into the next meeting. But.
But with that in the future, this, this is maybe something we could lobby to him about, about getting affordable senior living here.
Did, did we not talk about this two weeks, three weeks ago?
Yeah.
Briefly? Yeah, I brought, I.
It changed slightly.
Enclosed. Kathy?
Uh, is senior citizens housing under his portfolio?
Some of the money might be, I think Mrs. Poe is seniors housing or seniors. I, there is a group of that, I don't know what minister is that.
Yeah, Chris mentioned school, uh, that would be the Minister of Education, this.
Well, but he doesn't control the money, right? It's transportation and municipal affairs that control the money.
Yeah.
So talking to a Minister of Education doesn't get you far when it comes to capital.
They just, they're just in charge of reading, writing, and the rest.
And, and same with, and same with this seniors housing, I don't know who has that bankroll. Cause I think it's all held by one or two people, one or two ministers, but I'm not exactly sure who has it. Any other things that you think of? Last year, we only came up with one and we needed two, so, and the school didn't count.
What did we come up with last year?
The school was one of them and it didn't count, and that's why we got told no.
Policing?
Okay.
Policing?
Was, but we, well, we went straight to K-division, but.
Yeah.
Again.
And this year, they will only entertain one. So I think seniors housing might be a good topic.
Well, I guess we can put that on there, but we may have to do some research. And we have at least till the, the next meeting too, right? We don't have to get back to him for a while.
Well, the senior housing is very preliminary, obviously.
Right. And if we only have one thing to talk about, I don't know if that would be our biggest priority unless we just have nothing else to talk about.
Yeah.
Would you like us to table this to next meeting, sir?
Well, it, I think we can note that and try to do a little more look into who is the money holder for that. And then, cause we're having a Cypressview meeting on Thursday, so we can look into that a little bit. And then everybody put their caps on for the next meeting. Okay, so then there's really no motion. Did somebody do a motion?
Table.
I'll make the motion, table.
Table, okay, table till the next meeting, Chris. Any questions, concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. All right, Bow Island Parade participation. Did we get invited, Shannon?
We can put in an application to participate.
Oh, send the mayor, yeah.
Well, no, I, I know I got emailed this and I think I forwarded it to, did I forward this to you? Okay, I kept it to myself, okay.
No, you forwarded it to me, sir.
To you, okay, I thought I sent it off to somebody, cause I get lots of weird requests that.
Which is why we brought it here.
Okay.
And if you don't wanna do the float, I could take a counselor to ride in the passenger side of the truck to Bow Island that day. And you could wave out the window. We could get you a crown.
Well, the, I think the town's concern is the, the construction crew of the float doesn't guarantee that it'll make it past seven persons. Let alone there and back.
So part of the other.
We would be using it first, though.
But we would also have to find storage for it between Red Cliff days and a Bow Island days.
Yes.
Medicine Hat's in between as well.
Nope, this is before Medicine Hat, Medicine Hat is on the twenty-eighth of July.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And I recommend going on for that parade, I think it's gonna be fantastic.
Just cause you're riding on the float.
Yes.
Well, I don't know, I don't even know if we're tak, I don't know if we're taking the float there either.
Don't you get my hopes up and take it away now, Dwight?
Well, you can ride in a car.
Okay.
You can still, you can still wave.
Throw the candy.
You're not allowed to throw the candy.
You wanna throw candy at kids, Chris?
You can throw candy at kids, you can't do that.
So, do we wanna participate? What's the most rigid thing we have on our float? Does that water tower, that, what is the float gonna look like? Is it the same one we had five years ago?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay then, surprise us.
Shannon?
Has it been engineered? Well, if it's a secret, don't tell us.
Yeah.
I do not know, sir, this is in Shannon's and the social committee's department.
Well, I don't know either, so, cause I'm not on either.
We need this.
We need a motion. So I'll make the motion that the town participate in the Bow Island Parade with the mayor or his delegate in attendance to ride on the float and or municipal vehicle.
In a truck.
As a town rep.
Maybe just a dump tank.
That's an idea.
Well, I won't be able to wear my pointy hat in the truck. Okay, Kathy made a motion.
We'll see what the float looks like.
I can hardly wait.
Okay, any other questions, concerns, great ideas? All in favor? Opposed? Is that clear?
Clear as mine.
Yeah, it's carried.
Get somebody to wash the truck.
Well, if it's raining, we'll wash on the way. Okay, Town of Bon Accord. They're with the, they're worried about the increasing utility fees as other communities and.
Info.
Jim, for info. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And then the Town of Tofield.
I'll move back, frankly.
James. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then the Town of Fox Creek in support of the RCMP.
For information.
Okay. Kathy? Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried, and then the Town of Tofield. Larry? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then a letter from three MPs proposing a town hall event. I just don't know, where did the June sixth, is that when we got this thing? Cause June sixth is over, right?
Yeah, that's when it was received.
Okay, that was, okay, we got it on June sixth, yeah, it's down there.
I'm both for information.
James, for information. Any questions or concerns?
So it means we won't have a.
That means we're just gonna receive it for information.
And say, screw you, conservatives.
No, we're not saying that, you are on here. Okay, okay. Any que, other questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, so moving on to other municipal managers' reports to council for info.
See for information.
Kathy? Any questions or concerns?
Um, I have a question, I don't know if I really can answer this, but I was driving down Main Street and First Street and I didn't see any playground zone signs yet. I was wondering when those were gonna go up.
They will, that project will be finished by end of month.
There is the one playground sign.
Well, yes, I saw that one.
They probably had to order the signs.
Oh, yeah, and that's fine, I just was curious when it was going to be done. Oh, man.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns?
Deceased cat.
So earlier today, Sergeant Courtney was telling us that they don't monitor Facebook often. And I don't know if the town monitors all the Facebook pages often, I think some counselors do. Um, I guess the latest one that was coming up this weekend was an individual that only comes on when he has a gripe. Supposedly can't get into the cemetery with their vehicle, cause the gates are closed. During days, whereas Medicine Hat does open their cemetery during the day, because they do have a garage there and they work there. So they open and close that gate daily, so people can actually drive into the cemetery and drive back out. His complaint was, we don't do that. There's a, there is a man door, you can get in there. But can't drive. So is that a hardship or not?
Uh, the only hardship we could see to it, sir, is, and Shannon is checking to see if we have policy that says we have to have it locked during the day.
Oh.
That's the only thing we can think of.
Okay. Because I know at one time we used to lock and unlock, even Lions Park, we used to open and close those washrooms, right? I don't know what we do with those now, are they open twenty-four hours a day? Are they locked, unlocked? I don't, I don't know either, cause I don't.
I don't think they're open during the day, sir, unless the facility is open.
Being used?
Yeah.
But those are public washrooms, where do people go? Just at the water park?
Well, when my son was four, he went under a tree.
Well, you. And that did start, right? I did see that on Facebook.
Did he close the door?
Again, I, I don't know.
We will certainly look into it, and if there's no policy, we will have them open, if that is the will of council.
Well, and I, I can see where if you open something twenty-four hours a day, then vandals have easy access.
Oh, yes.
And that's happened in the past too.
More and more crackheads in the area too.
Well, they just kicked a bunch out of a house in Riverside, they might come to our cemetery.
No, the bathroom we're talking about being open.
Well, the one down at the river's open twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah, it is, yeah, that's where my car was found.
The one that you left the keys in.
The only, well, that's where they had to go.
That's.
Anyway, that was, like I say, it just was a, a concern of an individual. Other people actually almost stood up for us and said, well, they can get in and out, because of course there's a walk.
There's a walk.
And even a scooter gate you can get through.
Oh, yeah, it's light enough.
Yeah, anyway, uh, it's just something, cause even if we just opened it during public works hour, which would be only from seven to three, that's better than not at all, right? I, I, it doesn't have to be on weekends, even though we do have some students working weekends, but they're not year round, so I don't believe. Anyway, just things like that, and yeah, the Lions Park, I don't know either.
If it, if that is the will of council, we definitely can look at our policies to make sure there's nothing and get the, the procedure developed, sir.
Okay. Well, I don't know if it's a will, it was just, like I say, it was something that was on there this weekend. James?
Since you brought up the topic of Facebook, um, did anything happen with the, um, garbage bin that had appendages spray painted all over it?
It's gone.
Well, the one that had bad names got taken away the very next day and they thanked us even on Facebook. That, that one happened right away, but the appendages, that might still be out there. Cause they're not racist.
I was not made aware of appendages, I did get a complaint.
I might be, I might be getting mixed up, I might be thinking of the same one.
The one, the one had the N-word.
Okay.
Right, and it got taken away the next day.
That's, that's the one that was removed.
Yes, that was removed.
Yeah, that was removed, but there are some out there that have.
I thought one had a big.
Well, there are some down the alleys that have genitalia on them too, yes.
Why are you smiling at us?
See, see how you can use good words?
No, I didn't.
So as they are reported to us, we do, um, put in work orders and it was handled right away. If, uh, I know that, that Jeff is working on a program, when we can do that. The racist remarks we remove as rapid as we can. Uh, we do know that, uh, in the new order of garbage collection, we're supposed to have some time every week to do some maintenance.
And, and our truck driver should be able to note when he sees a badly vandalized bin. Or similarly, he looks at the bins.
Well, I think he has to.
He has to drive up towards.
It's gonna line up to it, yeah.
Anyway, it's not like they're.
It's easier, it's not.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? I see they're starting to compost.
Yeah.
So what does that look like?
I, I don't know, Jason does. That the instructor told me I could eat chicken out of there. I told him right after him. That they could cook chicken in the compost pad.
Oh, you can roast your chicken in there, okay.
Yeah.
That's nice.
Yeah.
It's that warm. Okay, Larry?
Is there going to be a compost receiver at our, uh, what's that, facility?
We have not found any motion where council has directed us to do that, sir.
I'd make one right now.
We already have.
It's not on the agenda at all.
Just procedure, Larry. You can tell it's summer, you guys must think it's wide open.
Yeah.
Open for summer.
I'm not Jason Kenny.
Point of privilege.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I do remember it was one of the thoughts of the Waste Management Authority. I do remember it was one of the thoughts of the Waste Management Authority. But I don't believe anything went from the Waste Management Authority to council as a suggestion. I don't think we've we've reached that point yet.
We have no record of a motion being made.
No, there was no motion.
Okay, well, so where are you getting your feedstock from then?
So as of right now, uh, we've had some fairly good, uh, interest from the different greenhouses around to sort out there, to in the past, they've just brought everything in one truck, all of the garbage and all of the green material, uh, for the difference in price, seventy-six dollars a ton versus the twenty-five dollars a ton. They've told us, the folks we've talked to have been more than willing to separate that material, and so far, they've done a very good job of making sure there's no contamination. Um, the other material that we have coming in is coming from, uh, from GFL, who told, who approached us earlier um, in the year, it was actually almost perfect timing, about the same time we were getting our training, they were looking for a place to bring some material from a site that they normally would compost, but they're doing some repairs, so they need a a location to take their material, so that's been, um, it's it's basically the the perfect amount of material to get as we're working through our processes and procedures and and learning, learning the site, so the the training that we had, um, was excellent. The fellow who came down or over from B C was very knowledgeable. He does this sort of training and and design of of sites all across, um, well, it sounds like all across Canada at the very minimum. And, uh, and that was, it was very good, so we're we're confident, it it appears that we are heading in the right direction with that. Um, there's no real discernible bad odor at this point, which is usually a good sign that composting is occurring, so.
And this may not be a question I can ask, so I'll ask it and you don't have to answer. Did the new landfill manager have any previous experience in composting, or was it somebody from within?
Uh, he does have experience in composting and landfills.
So then we just have to see if it's worth trying to set up a place where residents could bring compost if they wanted to.
And it's there, we have been accepting it, if folks come to the landfill with a truckload of of, uh, grass clippings in the back of their truck, my understanding is we've we've got a spot that they can dump it, now that would be up at the at the compost receiving pad. Um, and, uh, that's that's where that is right now.
What about, um, is is, I, it's hard to offer a place for free, because then I believe what you'll end up getting is there's all kinds of contracting lawn care services that would start to use the facility, because they do it already. Not that nobody's ever said they haven't seen them putting it into our bins already, when they're not even supposed to do that.
Right.
So, do they haul out there?
Um, I don't think we've got there yet, because we've just started the the process.
Okay.
Again, if they, if they, uh, first, if they've previously, they were being sent down to the working face for seventy-six dollars a ton. And now if they sort the material, they could take it to the compost pad for twenty-five, they very well may may come to our location.
Okay, so it'll just just a process and while you're learning, you're not advertising it heavily?
No, it's just been word of mouth at this point in time, but, you know, things things spread quickly amongst the the business community, and then there's been some some good uptake, and there's been the the local, uh, greenhouses have been very, very good to work with in that regard.
Yeah, I believe while they're pruning, that's easy for them, it's just when they actually pull in the fall, then that's one of the twine families.
We we may do a trial with that, but I'm not really hopeful that that viney, twiny materials, we don't have a shredder, we just have a mixer, so if if it comes to us in a big blob that's all mashed together, it will come out on the conveyor all mashed together, and it'll go through the composting process all mashed together and and probably not, not really work in our system. Is my guess.
All right, so any other questions of the manager report? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, that is carried, and then landfill grafts.
Excuse me, sir, what did you want to do about the cemetery?
What did we want to do about it?
Yeah.
Look into it.
Um, I think if if we should, if there is a policy that says we do or don't, we could look at that first, I can't make a motion, so I just brought it up because it was something on Facebook. Yes, no, maybe.
I think we should, uh, consider the possibility of additional vandalism if you let people drive in there. And I can show you videos of what happens on the streets here, and you get some idiot, um, you know, I it's it's gonna be risky and it's gonna add an extra liability to it.
I I don't deny that at all, like, if you can't walk and you're driving, I don't know how good your driving is either, so. I just, like I say, it just.
There is a lot of activity around that parking area there in the evenings.
Well, no, I I wouldn't want it, like I say, it would only be while they were there.
Yeah, yeah.
No, not to be left, not to be left open all the time, no.
Looking for trouble.
That would be a mistake, for sure.
So while there was somebody attending the cemetery?
No, like, say while public works are there, or the water treatment plant boys are there, like, from seven till three, just during working hours, it would not be an after-hours thing. But if if we have policy one way or the other, then that's.
If we got policy, then we don't need a motion, so look into that first, then make a motion later if we don't have a policy.
Yeah, okay.
Report back.
All right, landfill grafts. Larry? Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, that is carried, and council important meetings and events, Chris?
For information.
Anything missing? So the Bow Island Parade is the sixteenth. Medicine Hat Parade is the twenty-eighth of July. And the twenty-first isn't on there, but it won't help us now.
It's Trump's. Leader's cause.
Anyway. Chris moved for information, all in favor, opposed, that is carried, do we need a break? James moved us into closed. Eight seventeen, any questions or concerns, all in favor, opposed?